Trustees, are you guys ready?
Yes.
We're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. Village Clerk, please call a roll.
Here.
Here.
Here. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion for Mayor Proton.
So moved.
Oh, trustee Meyers, if you could make a motion. No, okay. Trustee Meyers, if you could make a motion to appoint as Mayor Proton.
I'd like to make the motion to trustee Rosie Williams.
Beg.
Beg, okay. The acting chair person tonight.
I second the motion.
Any comments or questions? Village Clerk, please call a roll.
No.
Jones.
No.
Meyers.
Tate.
No.
Washington House.
Yes.
Will you be ready?
Yes. At this point, when the mayor did call in earlier today and say that he's on his way and he's not sure he'll be here tonight, anticipating that there may be an issue with the split vote of having three yes, three no to me chairing the meeting, it asks the village clerk to call him so he can participate in the vote and vote. As we all remember through the ordinance that was passed in November of 2015, anyone can call in to participate in the meeting via phone, but they cannot chair the meeting. So at this time, I ask the village clerk to please call the mayor.
You're pulling up right now? Excellent. We will wait for you. Thank you very much.
For those of you who haven't heard, the mayor stated that he's pulling up right now, so we're just gonna take a short recess to allow him to come in. So can I have a motion to recess for the mayor to come in?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Okay. Village Clerk, please call a roll.
Virges.
Yeah.
Jones.
Yes.
Meyers.
Yes.
Tate.
Yes.
Washington House.
Yes.
Yes.
This is a good night for the mayor.
That's for motion to reconvene? Got motions or seconds?
Second.
Village Clerk, please call a roll.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Meyers.
Yes.
Tate.
Yes.
Washington House.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, move to item number two, public comment. All questions, comments, those projected to the mayor. Each speaker will be given three minutes to comment. Each speaker will be allowed one opportunity to speak. If you have something, please come to the microphone. Seeing no one, we'll move to reports of departments, committees, and commissions. Do we have anyone from the Fire Department, 911? Seeing none, we'll move to... Oh, you have it?
Yeah, Mayor and Board Trustees, I have Chief Staff again to report. I think I passed it out. I'll put it in everybody's box.
Great to speak a lot. I can barely hear you myself.
I beg your pardon?
Yeah, I was trying to...
I said I have the Chief's, Fire Chief Staff again's report and I passed it out to put it in the box for everybody, but I'll read it all here in a second. He says, it says that over the past two weeks, the Fire Department responded to 22 calls, the fire box, the Fire Department, three box alarms, three AMB backslash PD assist, two brush fires, two CO alarms, two fire alarms, three lifts assist, one mutual aid, one smell of smoke, four vehicle accidents, one structural fire. He said, "We are continuing training on the newest engine. It will be in service on March 20." That ends the report.
Thank you very much. Move to Police Department, Fire Chief Kowalski. I'm sorry, Police Chief Kowalski.
Mr. Mayor and Trustees, for the period between January 24th and February 28th, we responded to 1,374 calls of service with 96 arrests. Case of interest, on February 17th, the Sauk Village Police Department was invited to participate in a prostitution sting by the Linwood Police Department. Invitation came due to our participation in one of, or their participation in one of our stings several months ago. Both departments were successful in securing several arrests on a variety of charges. On February 21st, I met with Karen Fulton, Executive Director for People Engaged in Advancing Community Enrichment, which is peace in the South Suburbs. Ms. Fulton is a retired educator who has created this group for the South Suburbs. The group's mission is to enrich the youth and families and create positive community change. As a side note, the case coordinator, social worker for Rickover Junior High School, had an introductory meeting with Ms. Fulton on the subject of restorative justice during the 2015 and 2016 school year. Social worker for Rickover is planning on having future training with the district. We will be coordinating free training with the Peace Group and the Police Department in the future. Also a note, prior to coming here, our officers made a great grab in front of Tony's Liquors. They spotted several individuals who were known to them, one of them being wanted out of Richmond Park for a shooting that they had there. He was apprehended and taken into, taken under arrest and being held for Richmond Park. Wishing everyone peace and reflection during this letting season. That's the end of my report.
Thank you very much, Chief. Move to reports of officers under Mayor's report. First of all, I apologize for being late today. Of course, the weather did not help, but I was attending an event with our own Cook County Commissioner, Eddie Moody, and had a great opportunity to meet with other mayors that were there. There was, Cook County President was there, the Speaker of the House, Mike Manigan, was there, and many other state representatives. So getting out there representing you, the residents of Sauk Village, and trying to make sure that we're still focused on those in Springfield and surrounding communities. So had some good meetings with some of them there. Next, I'd like to give the collectives report. Could not remember if I'd given this one, so I'm gonna give it again if I did. But for December of 2016, property taxes were $104,445.84. Other taxes were $209,925.89. Licenses and permits were $5,513. Fees and services were $197,826.81. Grants were $1,635.90. Transfers of $426,001.14. And miscellaneous of $112,926.52 for total revenues of $1,058,275.10. That's for December of 2016. With that read, we'll go to Village Clerk, Mr. W. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, the what's happening in Sauk Village is on the back table. There are several things to note on the upcoming events. We have the unity of the community, which I'm sure trustee Washington House will talk about. We have Easter egg events coming up, both at Crossroads Church of God and the Parks and Recreation. We have Student Government Day coming on Tuesday, April 12th. And also, for the Village Clerk's office, we have the Property After Death Workshop. This year, it will be a bilingual presentation. We're very excited. That'll be the first time this presentation is being done in a bilingual form. We have the Spring Craft Show, Vendor Show, which is Saturday, April 8th. Comcast Gears Day is going to be Saturday, April 22nd. This is on Earth Day. This is a huge outreach, excuse me, outreach that involves Comcast, Sauk Village, mentoring youth through technology, and Crossroads Church of God. This is going to be a great community cleanup day. And I do have waivers that people need to fill out if you'd like to participate. We're looking between 100 and 140 volunteers that day going throughout the community. We've already focused on a few projects that we'd like to complete. We are looking for as many volunteers from the village. We have volunteers from Comcast and all the other groups, but we need people from Sauk Village to also participate. So please see me if you're interested. That will be from 7:30 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. on Saturday, April 22nd. Volunteers are needed and light refreshments will be served. You will be given your t-shirts, your gloves, and everything you need to work at. So please, let's have Sauk Village show up and see how we want to clean up the community. Also, on the what's happening in Sauk Village, there's some important dates for the April 4th Consolidated Election. Mail ballots are available now at the front desk and also at the back table and through my office at any time. And we have the last day to register to vote by paper application is March 7th. Grace Period Registration and Voting is March 8th through April 3rd. Last day to register to vote by online application is March 19th. Early voting is March 20th through April 3rd. Election Day is Tuesday, April 4th. Polls open from 6 a.m. to 7 p.m. If you need further information, you can check out www.saukvillage.org or www.cookcountyclerk.com for any information you may need on early voting, polling locations, and other election information. I would encourage everyone to please ask your friends and neighbors to sign up for the Sauk Village email alerts because that is where this type of information gets circulated and it's a great way to communicate with residents. And thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. That's all I have.
Thank you. Village Administrator, Director of Public Safety, J.W. Fairman.
Mr. Mayor, Board of Trustees, my report begins as follows. As of the end of January 2017, fiscal year-to-date water revenues increased by $387,226.40 over the same period a year ago. This represents the ninth straight monthly increase in water revenues. Most of this revenue has come as a result of staff identifying non-payers and related issues involving tampering of water collection data. It has taken staff more than a year to identify these circumstances and take corrective action. The end of the year 2016, UCI crime statistics show a decrease of 23% over 2014. For the social media folks who, for whatever reason, continue to misrepresent Sauk Village's UCI, UCR crime information, please use the graph that I have provided. Use it as a visual for your media page. Currently, 2014 UCR information has been released. The adjusted information will be released later this year along with the 2015 UCR data. The reason for the adjusted 2014 UCR can, as a result, can, and as a result of a conflict between the New World Software, which was purchased by the village to collect and report crime information, and reported and submitted by former police staff members for that period of time. I'd also like this time, Mr. Mayor, like to make a statement earlier in terms of Mr. Mohan sending out to you all saying that, just to let you know, we have not borrowed any funds from the water sewer fund for the payment that you'll see on this, in these documents today. And that is my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Trustee Virges.
Mr. Fairman, the payroll is due Wednesday, tomorrow. I anticipate anything to be drawn from the water sewer fund to make payroll for this coming week.
As I just stated, Mr. Mohan wrote this letter or a memo to you all in the mirror today saying that, just to let you know, all that we have not borrowed any funds from the water fund.
Turning to the payroll that's due this weekend, this Friday, I was asking, do you anticipate borrowing any money? Because it has to be in by tomorrow for those that have to... This payroll we're talking about today was paid at the beginning of this month. I'm talking about the one that's coming up now, that's coming Friday. And I'm just wondering, are we anticipating, is there any anticipation of borrowing money from the water fund for the upcoming payroll? Because I would like to know, we need to do that now rather than have consensus, have consensus voting on the phone. So I'm just wanting, trying to be a little proactive to find out there. Is there any anticipation of doing that?
As of today, Mr. Mohan has not indicated there was any intent to use any money on the water fund.
So this coming payroll is okay then?
As I stated, as Mr. Mohan has not indicated that he had planned to use any water fund money for this coming payroll.
Okay.
Question. Trustee Tate.
I saw something, actually it was last year. And so I'm trying to figure out, what is the current status of the Cook County Hazards Mitigation Report? Because those come out, sure come out in October every year, and I didn't, I don't recall receiving any reports or hearing about it. And this is already technically March. So what's the status of that report?
No updates at this time.
No updates?
I have no updates for you. It's the same. Anything else?
Mr. Mayor, six months for a hazardous materials report, and we don't know if it's done or not?
Trustee, I don't have anything in front of me, so I have no updates for you at this time.
We have a village administrator.
Okay. We have no updates for you at this time.
When will it be available?
I don't know. All right? Anything else? I think it is now. All right, move to reports to the trustees, boards, and committees. Senior Committee, Beaming Bifurcation Committee, I have that. Let's see, Senior Committee, See Bloom Township Senior Community, I'm sorry, Community Luncheon Program, Luncheon, Hula Hula, on Wednesday, March 15th, at the Serbian Social Center, which is over on Stony Island and Lansing. The cost is $6 for Township seniors and town, I'm sorry, and $12 for either out-of or non-Township seniors. Ticket deadline is Wednesday, March 8th. Tickets for the Tuesday, April 11th Luncheon, which is the last luncheon for the season with the In Canigo Noc, will be on sale at the March event. Senior Department is taking appointments for AARP tax preparation. Openings are still available for several trips again this year. Call 708-754-9400 for appointments and/or information. Affordable transportation available within the township. You can call 708-754-8200. A couple days prior to an event, there is no charge to the community luncheon. Age options and South Suburban Senior Services are making several Medicare fraud presentations in several local communities. On Monday, March 13th, the presentation will be at 11:30 at the McConaughey Public Library, and that would be preceding the blood pressure screening, luncheon, and movie. This month will be Oliver. Reservations are required. Please call 708-757-4771, and seating is limited. A fraud prevention fair will be held on Friday, March 17th, from 10 a.m. to 12 p.m. It'll be held at the Josephine P. Argento Senior Center, that's located in Cayman City. Bring your old Medicare summary notices and other personal documents to be shredded. A shredder drop box, a secure drop box will be on site, and you can come to play Fraud Bingo. All seniors 15 and above, regardless residency, are welcome to attend the Friday event, Senior Open Activity Events. That's from 12:30 to 3:30 p.m. As always, they have bottled water, light refreshments will be available, and Rummy Koo Kubes, those seems to be the popular game for those in attendance. Let's see here, you can also bring anything. If you have other things you'd like to do, if you have games or crafts, feel free to bring those. The next Saturday, for their event on Saturday, will be March 25th and every Fourth Saturday. Let's see here. I'm sorry, the next Saturday is on March 25th and every Fourth Saturday. Then, let's see here, the Fun Club Candidates Forum, right now is currently scheduled for Saturday, March 25th. There'll be a flyer coming out with details. And then, looks like lastly, there's chili chefs are needed for the Ninth Annual Chili Cook-Off, which will be Saturday, March 18th. There'll be flyers for that also. And then again, the next meeting will be on Thursday, March 9th, 2017, at 7 p.m. That is the senior report. Move to Parks and Recs Committee, trustee Jones.
This coming Thursday will be the committee meeting for Parks and Recreation. That's March 2nd, here in the Village Hall, at 7 p.m. March 25th is Open Gym, and that's the last Saturday of every month. And that will start at 11 to 2:30. And the Easter Egg Hunt will be April 15th, starting at 11 to 1. And that concludes my report.
Trustee, while I'm thinking of it, I received a note from a resident who would like to rent the community center. I sent the information to J.W. and Sherri to get that information to you. They would like to rent it around the end of March. So I guess she says she's been trying to get ahold of you, but you've been missing. You haven't been able to, she hasn't been able to get ahold of you, so... If you don't receive that information in the next couple days, if you'll let me know.
Is it a letter?
You got it, okay. So if you would see the village manager, make sure he has that. All right, move to Public, move to Public Works, trustee Virges.
Thank you, Mayor. I didn't receive a report from Kevin, but I have talked to him in regards to some of the problems that are going on in the village, and I'd just like to give an update. There were two lights that were out on the Route 215th and Peterson. They're right there together. I was told that that's a comm ed problem. And as soon as comm ed does their part, then Public Works will take care of theirs. The lights that were out in Deer Creek, that was a transformer problem. Obviously, the transformer's been fixed, so those lights are back on. And then lights out at the Lincoln Meadow entrance over there, and that also is a comm ed problem. Also, in Lincoln Meadows, a storm sewer problem that they have, they've backfilled it, but now they're waiting for the asphalt company to allocate to open up and they will actually finish that off as soon as possible. And now with this storm going on, I'm pretty sure, and I'll check tomorrow, the branches and everything will probably be picked up hopefully by the end of the week because I'm pretty sure if this blows a lot, it will be falling branches and debris. So they will take care of that, but it was also encouraged that the residents actually sweep out or clean out their storm sewers so the water can at least go down and you won't have floods in front of your house. So I just wanted to touch on that. And the next meeting for Public Works will be March 8th, here at 7 o'clock. That is my report.
Thank you, trustee. I'm sorry. Move to Housing and Governmental Committee, trustee Tate.
The Intergovernmental Committee is still networking with some of the communities, trying to find out what services they are providing their residents that we can key in on and try to provide to some village residents. And that's been ongoing and we're getting different pieces of information. Hopefully, we can get something locked in that says that what services are being provided in another community would benefit Sauk Village. And then I'll bring that to this board, and the board can decide if there's something they want to tackle. The Housing Committee, we're still working on finalizing the plans for our second workshop. As you can remember, we had a workshop for first-time homebuyers, and we had individuals across the board, from financing to criteria that you need to just inform a potential buyer of what he or she needed to do to own a home. So we're putting together and trying to finalize the second workshop, which we hope we can do within the next month so that any first-time homebuyers will get all the information they need. And last year, when they did it, once you qualify, you could buy a home wherever you wanted to, but of course, we want you to buy in Sauk Village. So that's gonna be coming out, and I think it's very important that you get the information that you need if you're a potential homebuyer, if you're renting at the present time. And there is assistance that was being provided for down payments. It was a really good program last year, and I'm not sure what this program is gonna look like, but we're gonna try to put together by the, within the next month so that you could come out, listen to, and meet with the individuals, the bankers, the loan officers, those type of individuals, where you can sit down one-on-one and discuss your needs or your priorities. So I look forward to hearing about that. That's gonna be coming up, and hopefully I can finalize the date within the next, within the next month to do. That's all I have.
Thank you, trustee. Move to Public Safety. It's Public Safety and Orders Review Committee, trustee Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple items tonight, maybe three. We did review the vicious dog ordinance. Looks like we'll be coming to the board, not right away, but we'll be coming to the board for three amendment changes on that. We also talked a little bit about the truck enforcement ordinance. Going to meet with the police chief and go over some fine details on that one. And we also talked about the ordinance regarding that everybody should have dog license and cat license in town. We're about 20% lean on there, so we'll be looking at that and make an amendment and present that to the board on that. The last thing, Mr. Mayor and the board and residents, don't forget about the musical that Neighborhood Watch is putting together at Rickover. Ms. Washington will do a full review on that on her report. That's all I have. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, trustee. Ms. MF, Neighborhood Watch Committee, trustee Linda Washington House.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I just want to say thank you to my co-chair, trustee Myers, in regard to the unity in the community. The community is very excited about this concert that's coming up. It's approximately 10 days away from tonight. We have local talent, all of the schools. We've contacted the churches, different residents in the community that want to be a part of the concert that will be hosted by Darryl King. We do have the flyers in the back tonight. It is a free concert. Like I said, the different schools are gonna be represented along with our special guests, Willie the Entertainer. So we are very, very excited about our concert that's coming up. We also have letters that we sent out throughout the community to ask people if they wanted to make a donation towards this concert with the expenses, and if you're gonna make a donation, you need to bring it to the Village Hall. They'll give you a receipt, and they'll put it in the account line item for Neighborhood Watches. Watch. It's already targeted. So, with that being said, I think before we have our next Neighborhood Watch meeting, which will be on March 13th, those flyers are also in the back. The only thing that we really have coming up is the concert, so we want you to tell your neighbors, tell your friends, this is a family-friendly concert. You can bring the children, the grandparents out to Rinkover. The doors will open at 5:30. It is general seating to first come, first served, other than for elected officials, and we have some other dignitaries that have said they want to be there, but you can sit wherever you want to sit, and it's free to the community. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee. Move to Budget, Finance, and Community Relations Committee, trustee Rosie William-Bay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things. The Public Relations Committee met, and we finalized the village sticker contest and the winners. Winners will soon be notified, and they will be asked to come to the Village Hall to present their stickers and so that they can get their prizes, and that will be at an upcoming board meeting. We also finalized the questionnaire that will be sent out to all of the candidates in the upcoming election for the March Soft Talk. If anybody remembers, every two years, we put together a list of questions, and whoever's running in the upcoming race will have the opportunity to fill out, return back to us by a certain time, and if, once we get those in there, by, if they meet it by the deadline, then they go on the Soft Talk. And that's just an informational piece for all residents, so they can know, kind of get some more information about the candidates. So, that has been finalized, and that will be going out soon. Also, we have a meeting tomorrow with Bloom Trail to finalize Student Government Day. As we said before, the 60th anniversary is this year. It's in March. However, similar to District 168, the schools, the students at District 206 have testing in the month of March, so we are unable to do Student Government Day in the month of March. So, Student Government Day will be April 12th, and we're asking, Mr. Mayor, and excuse me, the village administrator, I know that we do not have department heads and vendors here anymore, such as our engineer and our attorneys, but we are asking that they do come back for Student Government Day, as has been typical for the last 41 years, that they're here to participate in the event, and they, we will require those individuals as well as our elected officials to present a report. We, it's not yet. We will definitely let you guys know when we need the reports by, but we will be doing Student Government Day like we've done in the past. We will not, it will not be a two-day event this year, though, because the high school schedule is a little bit more grueling than the eighth grade schedule, so we cannot take them out of school for two days. So, they will be, it will just be a one-day event, and then we are planning on having a light reception in the senior center afterwards.
In 20, District 206, I'm just curious, were you, did you target South Village residents there, or, okay?
Yes. We actually let them do the selection at, at the school level, and we asked that they, that they focus on South Village residents that were in ninth grade. So, they came up with their own criteria as to how to pick the students. They have 24 students in mind, and we will be discussing how they pick them and how to proceed tomorrow during the meeting, but yes, they are South Village students.
All right.
Oh, I'm sorry. One more thing. The 60th anniversary events, we did review those as well. We are beginning to finalize them, and again, the things that are definitely finalized right now are the fact that we're having a party, and we are raising funds for fireworks. So, I just wanted to remind everybody that there are, we have, do have fundraisers out there. If anybody wants to be a part of those, that committee, or has any ideas for fundraising, to please let myself or the village board know, and that's all.
All right. Thank you, trustee. Move to item number six, new business. Ask for motion to approve all accounts payables and disbursements for January 24th, 2017, through February 28th, 2017, according to South Village policies. Is there a motion to approve? We got a motion, is there a second? We got a second, any questions or comments?
Question.
Trustee Burgess.
Page one, after the immediate checks. So, that's page one, after the immediate checks. In the first, well, I'm sorry, the second, accounts payable area of administration, it says, "Village of South Village petty cash for two cartridges to the same person." Does that person have two printers? Is everyone following that?
Tell us one more time where you're at.
Okay. At the bottom, well, I'm sorry, at the top, vendor number 2187. It has invoice, same invoice, but different payables, one for $59 and one for $26. And, but it's for the same person. I don't know if it's the same printer, does that person, I didn't know if anyone had more than one printer, so is that for, they have two printers, and we're paying for two cartridges? Print cartridges?
Mr. Mayor, I can answer that question. Those, those, those were black and white, I mean, black and white as well, a color, and it was for the printer in my office. He doesn't have a printer in his office. He uses it.
Okay, because it has his name on it.
Well, he uses it, and he want, yeah, he uses it.
Okay. Now, my question then would be, if it's your printer, why shouldn't it be your name?
Going forward, we'll, we'll make sure it's in my name, but that's what it was for.
Because it is a little misleading, that's what I was trying to say.
All right. Any other questions?
Page two, elected officials for Neighborhood Watch, it was two entries. I just wanted to know what was the money used for, just says Neighborhood Watch, there's no atomization there.
I mean, the Neighborhood Watch Committee Chair sitting right next to you, I couldn't tell you, I just know that, just like everything else, there's shipping receipts turned in.
No, I was just wondering what it, what it was for. I mean, usually, things are atomized, but it says petty cash, so, you know, there's no atomization there. And I'm just wondering, was it for something specific, or it was just money given to Neighborhood Watch? I know they went for out of their fund.
I don't know. I don't know if the chair remembers.
Okay, I'll ask the chair.
No, I'm asking, do you remember what it was for?
Of course, I know.
Could, could you go left?
It's my committee.
Please.
We requested money to pay for the printing, for these flyers that I just announced that's in the back.
Okay.
Oh, okay. That would have been easy, just printing.
Printing.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions?
That's all I have.
All right. Any others? Here you go, we got a motion, a second on the floor, goes Kirk, please call roll.
Burgess.
President.
Jones.
No.
James.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, okay. I thought you missed one. All right. Motion carries. Item B, motion to approve special meeting minutes for January 24th, 2017. Is there a motion to approve? Got a motion, is there a second? Motion second, any questions or comments? Here you go, goes Kirk, please call roll.
Jones.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Will he's ready? Yes.
No.
Motion carries. Item C, motion to approve board meeting minutes for January 24th, 2017. Is there a motion to approve? Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion, a second, any questions or comments?
Question.
Trustee Burgess.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, these minutes that we have here have the word draft on them. Does that mean that they can be altered, or is this the final?
This is, this is what's being voted on, saying, once, once they're voted and approved, the word draft is taken off, and they get part of the record.
In other words, they can be changed. I explained this.
That's what I was asking. Can it be changed?
Because of the question that they were said that there was spelling some of the copies, I said, I will from now on put the word draft down there. The copy should be in your box, department heads, and elected officials, everyone else. It's given to you to please read and make changes if necessary before they get part of the permanent record. So, if you have something that you'd like to change on there, the answer to the question is if you mention it now, it will be changed, and the word draft, the watermark will be removed before it goes into the permanent record.
And will we get a copy of the?
If, if you request it, it goes online, it's also.
Oh, we have to request it? Okay.
But at this point, it's a draft until the board approves it. Once it's approved, it becomes permanent record, the watermark is removed.
Okay. All right. Any other questions or comments? Here you go, goes Kirk, please call roll.
Myers.
James.
No. Washington-House.
Yes.
Will he's ready? Yes. Burgess.
No.
Jones.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number D, motion to approve special meeting minutes for February 20th, February, sorry, February 7th, 2017. Is there a motion to approve?
Some move.
Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Yes. Motion second, any questions or comments? Here you go, goes Kirk, please call roll.
No.
Yes.
Will he's ready? Yes.
No.
Jones.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item E, ask for motion to approve and hold executive session minutes for February 7th, 2017. Is there a motion to approve?
Some move.
Got a motion, is there a second? Got a motion, a second, any questions or comments? Here you go, goes Kirk, please call roll.
Washington-House.
Yes.
Will he's ready? Yes.
No.
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 Motion carries. Item F, motion to approve insurance renewal as presented by the Owens Group. Is there a motion to approve?
Some move.
We got a motion, is there a second?
Sorry.
Got a motion, a second, any questions or comments?
Comment.
Trustee Tates.
When we had the presentation by the Owens Group, that we were told that we would give the information in advance, that we can review it, and she had a system of being able to ask questions and give responses back and forth. But my question is, the renewal is not due until the 27th of March, so why are we rushing this ahead? It's the end of February, so it's a month away before the renewal is due.
You make a good point. It seems like every year, trustee complains because we bring stuff at the last minute. This year, we brought everything to, to the board ahead of time, so we didn't have to sit here at the 11th hour and cast votes. So, they were brought in last week to give a presentation. The board had time to go review everything and for it to come up for a vote, and it's voted on prior, and everyone does have to say, why are you bringing this to us at the last minute and not giving us time to look at it and review it?
I'm sorry. The last part of your question?
We brought it in, so it wasn't being brought up to you at the last minute, saying we have to pass this, because it's got to be voted on next week.
Correct.
So.
Well, I thought you had a question at the end of your statement.
No, no questions.
Okay. Still, my question is why are we advancing this a month ahead of time to renew it? That's still.
So, we're not, so we're not waiting for the last minute? Yes.
Has anybody reached out to you with any questions?
No, we haven't.
Okay. You, you called, you called Owens Group yourself, and you got your answers.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Here you go, goes Kirk, please call roll.
Will he's ready?
Yes.
Burgess?
No.
Jones?
No.
Myers?
Yes.
James?
No.
Washington-House.
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries. Item G, motion to approve settlement for, oh, no, I'm going to mess this name up, Panziano versus South Village, case number 15-L-02832, in the amount of $6,900. Is there a motion to approve?
Some move.
Got a motion, is there a second? Ask again, is there a second?
Second.
Got a second. Now, is there any questions or comments?
Could you give an overview of the settlement?
No. It's pending litigation until, this is, was discussed in the executive session.
This was the last executive session.
Last, last executive session.
Mr. Mayor, is there a reason we can't read that figure?
I, I did, $6,900. That's part of the motion.
The mayor said, no, why are we still talking about it? Why are we still talking about it? He answered the question. He answered the question.
Vote Kirk. Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right. Here you go, goes Kirk, please call roll.
Yes. Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
James?
No.
Washington-House.
Yes.
Motion carries. All right. Move to miscellaneous comments from the Mayor and Board of Trustees. Start with trustee Williams-Bay.
I know that trustee Burgess talked about this earlier tonight, but I just wanted to make a comment. I was at Village Hall earlier last week, purchasing a new village sticker, and a resident came in to, to speak about these streetlights, two 1400 block of Peterson and one at Castle to Peterson. She was extremely upset. She stated that she talked to most, multiple personnel in this building multiple times about the situation. I just wanted to publicly, and I did tell Mike I was going to do this, publicly thank Mike for staying level-headed and calm, and he did reach out right away, tried to contact Mr. Fairman, who was unavailable at the time, reached out to Kevin Weller, who was unavailable at the time, left a message with both of them, and explained to the individual that what was going on. At the time, I was off at the table filling out my card, and she wanted to know if there were any elected officials or anybody in the house. He did tell her, no, I guess he didn't see me, and then I raised my hand and said, no, I'm here, I can take your questions. Well, that led into a 10-minute conversation regarding the streetlights, and then further, when I called, when I followed her back up with later with the information, it was another 20 minutes on the phone. Kevin did call back after she left, and he explained the entire situation, so I wanted to publicly thank him as well for being so thorough, and I wanted to let a lot of people know, because I know a lot of people have come up here and they've talked about the streetlights. And so, just for clarification, from what Kevin explained and what trustee Burgess stated before, it is a ComEd issue, and Kevin states that he's contacted people multiple times at ComEd. So, what Mike is telling people, and Mike is the person, the clerk at the front desk, and I don't know if this is going to help, but he's telling people to contact ComEd themselves, and he thinks that if enough people contact ComEd, that they will do something about it. But I'm asking that instead of it just being put on Kevin, if there's any way that either the village administrator or the mayor can reach out to ComEd themselves and ask that this be done, because a lot of people have come up to the board meeting and they've asked about it. A lot of people apparently have come up to the Village Hall and asked about it, and this person stated that she would contact the news and if this, if it's not rectified soon. So, I just wanted to make sure. I did tell her I would bring it up at this board meeting and see if we can get some, some resolution from there. So, if we could follow up on that, I'd really appreciate it.
J.W.'s got a little follow-up.
Oh, yeah, I'll follow up with our new, our contact. It was, it's a different person, named Miss Apparati, Apparati.
Yes, Lisa.
Thank you.
So, we, we do have a new contact through ComEd now. In fact, she used to work for Chicago Heights, for Mayor Gonzalez. So, we're, we're able to reach out to her, and I know Kevin has been reaching out. I know I've had a couple individuals reach out to me also. I've had some voicemails when I've come in, so, you know, we'll, we'll try to put a little bit more pressure on, on ComEd for these issues. Sometimes it's, it's trying to find where the fault is in the ground or in the polls,[1660.33] So, you know, we'll try to put a little bit more pressure on ComEd for these issues. Sometimes it's trying to find where the fault is in the ground or in the polls, or sometimes it's a little bit tedious. But we'll see what we can do about it, Lisa.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anything else? Trustee Mears?
Just one quick question. Chief, just before the storm could start, during the storm, did one of our squad cars get in an accident and is the officer all right?
Oh, definitely. That was part of the...
And the last thing I have to... It's very minor damage. I put the batteries aside. Oh, it works. All right, the last thing, Mayor, is to the director. How bad is this storm supposed to get tonight? We're supposed to have one flunking through, and then about 3 o'clock, we're supposed to get hit with another 70 mile an hour one?
I was checking the radars and everything, and as of radar right now, it's just saying that probably by 11:15, 11:30, we might get hit with another one, but not too severe. Right now, we're out of it, so...
All right, so JW, you still want fire to put somebody in the station?
I don't think we have a choice. They can't come in without us.
All right, the station will be manned tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Trustee Tate.
First of all, Mayor, perhaps in your comments, you can address the issues. We had a resident that asked about how meetings are scheduled, who approves them, who approves for cancellation of meetings. And she had questions along those lines. And perhaps during your closing comments, you can address those for her or for the public in general. The second item we have is that, I'm sure you're aware, we had a discussion last week and about several people looking at Facebook or social media, period. And they were bringing up issues with things they had read. As a matter of fact, some of the elected officials sitting up here have done the same thing. And one of the trustees had was against us approving that any subject could be discussed at any meeting. And she was under the impression that that was kind of wide open, and she said that's why she didn't agree with it. But we should probably, I take this for myself, I should probably make sure that we state exactly what we're doing when we vote on things and why we're voting on them. Because I thought that everyone understood that you could talk about any subject at any meeting, as long as it was village-related. You could not talk about the Bears or the Cubs as your public comment. We're not really concerned about the athletic events or other stuff, social media. About village-related materials, but if you so choose, you could perhaps discuss that and your understanding of why that ordinance was passed. And clarify for everyone else what they're doing with that. I am extremely concerned when we get involved in lies, because I think residents deserve to hear the truth, good or bad truth. And when we lie, we're giving a false sense of security to those lies, and we do it a lot up here. We do it a lot. During this election season, I've heard that several times, and that's all that you hear, are lies about people or about situations, about something. Now, that has to do with the village, so that's important. But let's talk about lies. We had an individual who's running for the school board who came up and accused one of the trustees of taking down, tearing down her materials. And then we had a trustee who supported that and stated that a report had been filed with the police. All of those things are lies. And if they're not, Ms. Eastman, who's running for school board, is not here. I was given, I was given a token for Ms. Eastman and trustee Washington House. I was given $50 apiece for them to bring their audio, their videos, so that we all can see the trustee tearing down their materials. Now, the person didn't have to give me this money, but they want to get to the truth also. And they want to see the videos of a trustee tearing down, taking down other people's materials during this election season. And I'm so interested, I would match each of these $50 out of my pocket, because I want to see that information. As I stated to you before, I have not known that trustee as long as some of you have known him. So my impression of his character was that he would not do what they accused him of doing. Now, maybe you have a different impression. Maybe you say that's the kind of person he is. But I think if they bring the videos so we can all see it, that resolves the question. There's no more, he said, she said. There's none of that. We can see it all for ourselves, and we can all be very clear on what we say. And I say, lies sound better than the truth sometimes. I think this is one way to put the lie to bed, to sleep, forget about it. So those $50 still exist. Well, it's $100 now for each Ms. Eastman and trustee Washington House to bring their videos and show us all. Let us all see it. And then we can all make our own determinations on the character of the persons involved in this one way or another. And I just like that to be put to rest. The second thing was that trustee Williams Bay had accused me of making statements about our school district students. And I asked her to bring the audio and play it so we all could hear it and hear me demean the intelligence level of those students. And so we need that to happen. Let's put an end to some of this stuff. When people are talking things, when people are talking about things, then let's let them either put up or shut up. That's the only way to resolve it. And that's an issue that I would like to be addressed, and that's just by bringing the audio. Bring the audio, and we can all listen to it and hear, and we can hear verification of her statements that she made, the statements that I supposedly made, which I deny. But once I hear the audio, we can find out the truth to that. Now, she stated that she had copies of the audio on her cell phone a week ago, and she asked anybody who wanted to hear it could hear it. And that's not a good way to do it, but we've done it before. We had a conference with our attorneys by our cell phone, because the village clerk could not find the speakerphone. So we did it by cell phone. That's not an effective way to do it. But I think that if we could do that, hook it up, let's listen to it, let's everyone be able to hear with your own ears of what occurred. Lies sound better than the truth. I am sick and tired of the lies that get repeated, and I've heard them repeated a million times, especially the last town hall, these meetings. And because people like to lie, that's what happens. But it starts at the top. It always starts at the top. When we are signifying and talking about people in the audience from sitting here, then it's okay for you to do it to each other. You could talk about across the aisles. You could talk about anybody you want to who's in the audience. That is not the way that a meeting is conducted. And since the mayor likes to lie, that kind of thing goes down, and everyone hears it.
Ladies and gentlemen...
That got a while.
Please let him speak. And she not a fool to his following.
To the village administrator who didn't have an answer to my question about the hazardous mitigation materials. This is another example of how we don't safeguard the residents of Salk Village. Why don't we know the status of hazardous materials that are traveling through Salk Village? What precautions there are? Who does what in terms of spillage to protect our residents? Why don't we know that? Why don't we get that information to you? You're the residents. Why don't we do that? If the administrator doesn't know, well, he didn't answer, but I'm glad he didn't, because nothing that he says is truthful. We were told there were four complaints against four trustees that were sent to the FBI for investigation. But nobody kept copies. The mayor didn't keep copies. The village administrator didn't keep copies. For those of you who have jobs that have administrative capacities, when you send something out, I'm sure your employer may require you to make copies or keep copies of documents to prove that you sent it out. He didn't have that. Then the mayor and the village administrator got together and had us pay money to our attorneys to develop a taser policy. Now, this is after one of our officers allegedly used his taser improperly. At the time, the acting police chief came to the meeting with materials in a folder that showed that there was a policy, and training was provided to the officers. The village administrator nor the mayor bothered to look at the materials that were presented. But they instead sent it to the attorneys to develop a policy, and we paid for it. And you said, why are we paying so much money to the attorneys? It's things like that. Why aren't they developing a policy that we already have? It does not make sense. But that's what happened. The village administrator said that he contacted several communities about increasing the water charges. If your water is cut off to $200 to have it reconnected. He said he contacted several communities, and that's what they're doing. Fortunately, trustee Burgess and his Parks and Recreation and his Public Works Committee did their own research and mitigated that by reducing that $200 down to $100. Lot difference in the money. I asked the administrator for copies of this information, and he got from other communities. He didn't have it. He threw it away. Okay, that's how we do business. We consult, we find out stuff, and we throw things away to keep people from finding out the truth. When you talk about what we charge for reconnection and what another community charges are totally different. And people think that all communities are the same. They are not the same. They are not the same. You cannot compare apples to oranges. They are not the same. So you can't say that I contacted these committees, communities, and this is what they're doing. It's not happening that way. So Mayor, I would like to address the resident's question about the meetings, if you could. And I would also like you to address the ordinance thing and get that resolved once and for all. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just a few follow-up comments. Number one, as trustee Tate did state, at the meeting, it wasn't a week ago, I believe it was more like four weeks ago, I did come prepared. He stated he didn't say something at a committee meeting, the very next board meeting. I did come prepared with copies of words and the portion of the tape, since we have residents and non-residents who are so diligently videotaping our board meetings. I was able to go on YouTube, find the portion of the negative words that he stated. I had that copy on my phone, which I actually just deleted yesterday, but I had that copy on my phone, and I asked to play it. The mayor told me not to play it, but as trustee Tate just said, he didn't feel that that was a good medium to have. So I am completely prepared to go back, get that information, and provide it in whatever medium trustee Tate so chooses, if that is a discretion of the mayor. I'm assuming the mayor will say no, but if that is the wish of this board, next Tuesday, I can have it prepared. We can drop down the screen. The library will donate the popcorn machine. We can all have a show and watch the three minutes of it open. We can all have a show and watch the three minutes of it, but it was there. The trustee asked for it, and I provided it. I wasn't offered $50 to provide my information. I didn't need to be offered it. He asked for it. I offered it. What I don't understand is that, yes, a trustee came, I'm sorry, a resident came up and stated she had an issue about Facebook. After that, several trustees stated that that resident should not have been able to talk about something that was demeaning to her personally on Facebook, that somebody said representing Salk Village. If they've got our name and they've got our logo, a lot of people think that they're representing Salk Village. So that Salk Village entity was saying something demeaning about her. Several trustees stated, I'm sorry, several trustees stated they didn't think that was appropriate. I stated at that time, the ordinance that was passed by this board, that I was not in favor of, stated that residents could get up and talk about any topic for three minutes. We had it before, where residents had to talk about village-related items on certain days, and they could talk about anything. I'm sorry, agenda-related items on certain days, and they could talk about anything on other days. That was wiped away. If the board would like to revisit that, as co-chair of the ordinance review committee, I'm sure the chair would not have a problem if we revisited that. But this board decided that the residents had the opportunity to speak about anything that they wanted. And if a trustee can sit here and call out a resident for saying something and a trustee for claiming something, and then offering them money publicly to present that information, I don't see how that is involved with village business. That's not talking about accounts payable. That's not talking about streetlights. That's not talking about anything productive for the village to move forward. So if a trustee can do it, I'm not sure how we can expect the residents to not follow our lead. Anytime we give them the opportunity to speak, they're gonna talk about whatever, just like we're able to talk about whatever. But again, if any members of the board would like me to have this information present for next Tuesday, I have no problem doing that, just like you. And whatever medium trustee Tate would like to do.
Trustee?
Me?
Question?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since my name was brought up, that I'm a liar, I don't ever have to lie about nothing as trivial as this whole situation. I have no control over what Ms. Eastman says. I think that this is a very bad thing to talk about somebody if they're not present to defend themselves. I'm not gonna try to attempt to defend Ms. Eastman and what she said. But what I said was that my campaign literature was torn down in crossroads. It was torn down all over Salk Village, which it was. And I was also accused of lying, that I didn't file a report. The chief is sitting right here. I did go through the police department. I did talk to the chief about my information being torn down. He did inform me that the police department have been informed that they cannot get involved politically with anybody, that they're just here to do their job. But they're here off their schedule and dressed in non-Salk Village uniforms, so they can do what they want to do. But if they are not supporting anyone, if he didn't make the report, he said he would talk to them first. The chief is sitting right here. Am I right, chief?
You are correct. In fact, I put out a memo.
Thank you. No need to elaborate, because I don't have to lie. Call somebody a liar, you're harder to have all of your facts straight. And instead of offering me $50, I think that trustee Tate, you should maybe take that $50 and invest it in some driving lessons so you can learn how to drive and put brakes and stuff, and tear it all up, and leave it to up and asshole to the community. It's been tore up since Christmas Day. I don't see how you can afford $50 for me and trustee Williams and Ms. Eastman. You need to take that money and put it back that you took from IML two years ago and stole village money. But you refused to bring back receipts. You refused to bring the money back. You sat here and said publicly, I didn't bring the money back, and I didn't bring the receipts back. So why are you worried about what I'm doing and offering me money? You're harder to take the money you took from the village and pay it back for IML. And I'm not gonna continue to go on with all the things you need to check yourself about. And people are always worried about what I'm doing with Neighborhood Watch and wondering about where my money is going that I raised with my committee by tagging on the streets in all kind of weather, getting people to donate by passing out legitimate letters on letterhead, where I inform all of the trustees what's going on. I'm not a shady person, but the people that follow me and stalk me, they're shady. They don't want no community programs. They don't want no youth programs. I have been diligent in making sure that these residents know who they are and that whatever I do, they forehead. They want to know where the money is going. The money wasn't given to me by the village. No trustee up here gave me no money for it, other than trustee Myers, who is my co. The mayor didn't give me no money for 1,500 book bags that Neighborhood Watch passed out. Not just book bags, supplies in the book bags, but we raised the money, but they go and they forehead. Where did she get the money from? We want a copy of the checks that gave her money. We want to see the back of the people's checks, the front of the people's checks. How much did they get? What did they spend it for? Because they do nothing. Been sitting up here a decade, been paid by your tax dollars. You should be concerned about over $100,000 for 10 years of sitting here, never did nothing for the village, still not doing nothing but watching everything I do. Keep watching me, because I'm doing something that you need to see, and that concludes my statement.
Trustee Jones?
Parks and Rec is always looking for volunteers. We have several upcoming events, if you would like to volunteer. On Good Friday, we will be stuffing the eggs for the Easter egg hunt, so if you would like to volunteer for that. And we also have the open gym coming up. Just give me a shout.
Trustee Jones, what time is the Easter egg hunt?
It's right now, 11 to 1. We're gonna, that's a topic that we're gonna discuss during our committee meeting this Thursday. But I'm pretty sure that's what it was, because we agreed upon last year that we was gonna shorten it. It was pretty long. So I think that's where it's gonna fall at.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Washington, you have anything else?
No, I had one more thing I wanted to say. I was at the school board meeting last night, and while I was sitting there, the president of Intergovernmental made a statement that she's thinking about...
made a statement that she's thinking about dissolving that committee because nobody's participating in it and nobody's coming to it. And that it's not beneficial at this point because of a lack of participation. And I stood there and I said that a trustee implemented that program, made up the program. The mayor gave him a committee. He didn't want that. He made up Intergovernmental, trustee Burgess did. It was unsuccessful. It never went nowhere. Then when trustee Tate won, he gave it over to him. He's had it. It's unsuccessful. It's not doing nothing. Then they gave it to Ms. Purdon over at the school board. And she announced last night, it's being unsuccessful. It's not going anywhere. So while you're trying to critique Neighborhood Watch, we are very successful with our committee. Get your committee straight.
Lie, lie, lie. Lie, lie, lie.
Trustee Burgess.
First of all, while it's still fresh in my memory. First, Intergovernmental was very successful.
Hey, let's trustee talk. He's got the floor.
We had, as a matter of fact, one of the people that was on my Intergovernmental was here in the audience today. And really, two. The other one just left at the time that I had that. And we went around to different communities to find out just how they did business and what they did to bring business into the community. We had a couple of spotlights for the businesses. We had one in front of a parking lot right there, right in front of the currency exchange. And we had another one over where Subway is located, in that plaza. And we had a lot of people came out. I mean, you know, it was, it was successful at the time. After that was over with, the mayor, that we had, the mayor Hanks came in and took it over and had so many, and he said he was going to take care of Intergovernmental. So then it became economic, it was economic development, Intergovernmental. Then it became just economic development. But it was very instrumental back in the time and it was very well attended. So I just wanted to clarify that up right here. So I'm glad that you said something in front of me because I can tell you right now, it was very successful. After the meeting is over, which you can ask the two gentlemen that was on that committee there back there. I just wanted to find, I just wanted to ask a question, Mr. Mayor. Something I've been asking for the last two meetings, well, really for the last month since we've had meetings. And I've, I've never had a chance to get you and Mr. Fairman at the same time, but now I have that opportunity today. And I wanted to know, the last time that we had money taken out of the water fund, it was taken out through consensus. So I asked at that time, who were the trustees that okayed that? And could I get a list of them? Well, I never got it. I still haven't gotten an answer. Who actually okayed it and the list of the trustees that actually did it? I asked, I perished and asked the trustees at a meeting, but no one said anything. So today, I wanted on the record again that I'm asking who actually okayed to have money transferred out of the water fund. This is for the month of January. And who were their names and how did they, you know? Because I didn't get a call. I'm just one trustee. I did not get a call to ask for anything to be taken out that time. I got the last call. And that was because I actually got an email. And I answered that email. But the first one, that was right before this one, I asked at a board meeting and at a committee meeting. Well, it was really two committee meetings because we didn't have a board meeting. So it was two committee meetings. I asked and I couldn't get an answer. So I'm just hoping that today that I can get an answer, email. Any kind of way someone leave something in my mail or whatever. But I just like to know what trustees okayed the transfer of this money out of the water fund.
Trustee, if I remember right, your question was answered the very next day by through an email.
No. No, that, that one was the last one. That's the one we just did. And I actually said that I okayed certain parts. And that was only for accounts payable, only for salaries and benefits. That was the last one that I saw that two trustees actually wrote on there. And I said, "I have no problem just for that." I'm talking about the one prior to that, back in January.
Prior to that, your question was answered. It was sent to you through an email.
No, I didn't get, Mayor, I didn't, I have a reason.
Pull up the email and resend it, please.
Please.
And do me a favor, make sure you circle the date when you received it. Thank you.
Yes. Well, I didn't, I didn't send an email. I asked a question at a board meeting.
And your question was not answered, but it was answered through an email like within a couple of days after.
Okay, I didn't, I don't know. I've asked everyone.
Mohan is very careful when it comes to.
My email does not go to email.
When it comes to borrowing. And again, I've informed the village department heads, send them to your.
Email.
No. They should be sending them to your village account. And your village account has been checked through Jared, Gerald, to make sure that they're all working.
My village, I told Mr. Fairman, I told village clerk, and I even talked to Gerald.
Well, if you want, if you want it sent to your personal email address, it just puts you in a very bad position.
Why? I mean, I have nothing.
It opens up your personal email address.
I have nothing.
And I am very much for putting all village business through village email accounts only.
Because the last, the reason why I'm saying that, Mayor, the last time it came in and it hacked my phone. My phone was out. So that's why, and Gerald knows it. And that's why it went, it went out. So that's why I don't use the Outlook anymore. I don't use Outlook because that's what it did. It hacked my email accounts.
All right, we'll, we'll get the email to you if you have to. Give them a hard, give them a hard copy. Mohan is very careful when it comes to the borrowing of the money. He calls me up. I will not allow money to be moved because usually I'm a tiebreaker. And he requests for everything to come back through. He keeps it in writing. The last time, I said I would not break a tie because it dealt with payroll. And that's when I told him to personally get on the phone and talk to you.
And he did, and I okayed just payroll. And I had no problem with just payroll. I've never had a problem with just some of the other things that I think that we have a problem with. But I've talked to Mohan yesterday. I was here yesterday and talked to Mohan and found out, but I still haven't got anything. Because he, he doesn't, you know, I haven't got anything. This is not for this one, the one we just had. No. This was for January. The same thing, and it's in the minutes too. And I never received an email or a response to it.
Are you checking your village email also?
Yes, I did. It was, it was never a response to it.
Followed it. All right.
Okay. The next thing I just wanted to say, I attended three different Black History Month programs that were held out in the village. And they were very, the schools were very well attended. And the other two were very well attended too. So I just wanted to say, I didn't get a chance to, which I didn't say much about Black History Month this, this month. But all, all the people that, that were involved in those programs, the kids and the adults did a great job. I just wanted to inform the board that they really did put on a, a fine program throughout the village. And it was, the one at the school was very, very well attended. I mean, it was, it was something. But I did inform the people at the school district that we never got anything formally. We never received anything in our mail or mailboxes formally. I don't know if it was a missing communication, but we never got a program or an invitation from the school district. So they said they would have to look into that and they hope that doesn't happen again. But that's what happened. I found out through word of mouth. And at the end of Black History Month, I just want to say that, you know, I believe Black History Month is all 365 all year round. To just designate one month does not, is not enough to, to actually showcase what has been, what's happened and what's been going on in our lifetime. So I just wanted to make that clear and just, just, just make that statement. And that's all I have.
Thank you, trustee. All right, we'll go through some of this stuff. First of all, I just want to make it very clear, and again, the audience, I apologize. You have to go through some of this stuff. It's an election year, as we all know, we're getting closer to elections. We have quite a few people on this board that are running for office. And we also have one campaign manager who wants to try to make the administration look bad. Says he's tired of all the lies and then sits up here and makes accusations and accuses people of being liars face out. So again, a lot of times I don't respond to foolishness and that's all it is. You know, we know Bible says not to respond to a fool to his folly. You know, his words are vain. If you know what vain means, it's empty. And that's what we're hearing from this trustee, who's a campaign manager for the ones, one of the ones that's on this board. So, you know, when it comes to the questions about the meeting schedules, I got no problem. The mayor puts out a meeting schedule every year. It's posted. It's on the website. We make sure it's at the library. It's in the back. So we have schedules of meetings. Meetings are scheduled by the mayor. If there's any special meetings, we put a, this is by, pretty much by state statute. The mayor has to put out what list of meetings we're going to have for the entire year. If there's any other meetings on top of those, they're special called meetings. So that's where we're at. And when it comes to canceling a meeting, we can cancel a meeting anytime that we don't have anything to bring before the board. If presentations have been canceled by presenters that are coming, there's no reason to bring everyone in and start turning all electricity on and everything for meetings. So we usually try to give enough advance notice. As long as we get enough advance notice that we're canceling a meeting, meetings canceled. If we have enough time, we'll post it on the marquee or we post it on the doors. We have the e-alerts. That's why it's important to make sure you have the e-alerts so that you know that meetings are being canceled. There's one other thing where three trustees can call for a special meeting. That's through state statute also. That allows trustees to call for meetings. Again, those are special meetings. Special meetings can only be discussed with agenda items only. Special meetings can't be called for any other special reasons. There's a lot of reasons inside state statute that we could bore you to death and tell you why you can call for a special meeting, why you can't call for a special meeting. But we're not going to go through all that tonight. When it comes to the ordinance, there is many, many meetings we talked about that ordinance where it talked about individuals coming to the podium and talking. And if you remember, that used to be on the first and third Tuesdays of every month that residents could talk about anything. On the second and fourth Tuesdays of every month, the residents could only come and talk on agenda items only. The village board felt that we were stifling or hushing the residents and the residents should have the opportunity to come up and speak about anything they want. There was multiple discussions on the amount of time it should be, three minutes or five minutes. The village board lifted it at three minutes. Now, without looking at the ordinance, now without reviewing it prior to the question, I'm working off of memory, so don't quote me on this. But if I remember right, it does say that a resident, again, comes to the podium. They're supposed to make their comments and questions to the mayor. They're allowed to speak on anything, on any topic, any topic for up to three minutes. They get one opportunity to speak. So if someone wants to come up and talk about something that's bothering them in the village and if it's social media, it's social media. That's going on to the next thing. I think you realize, you need to realize, and we hear this all the time. I've heard it on the news, how many times in the last week? That people need to realize, social media is not a news source. What you hear on social media is someone else's opinion. It's someone else is, is out there, they can say whatever they want. Social media is not a news source. And that came right off of, off the news, listening to the radio on the news. So this is not something that affects just Sauk Village. Social media, people are attacking municipalities on social media throughout all state of Illinois. I was in meetings tonight with mayors and they were talking about how they have their people on social media that's attacking them also. So, you know, it's usually one-sided where people want you to see their side and it's they're pushing their candidate or trying to get people to believe a lie. We've heard candidates and their spouses say before, if you say it enough, people will believe it. So that's their goal, to continue to say stuff on social media and try to get people to believe, again, as the trustee would say, their lies. There's no proof. There's allegations. And they'll continue to say it. So, you know, I, I don't look at social media. I get on there a couple of times a day and I go out and wish people happy birthday. And I might put something out there. My kids might send me something. I might say something for the kids. I don't look at social media when it comes to stuff about Sauk Village. Someone brings me something about social media from, from something about Sauk Village, I don't even read it because it's not a news source. You know, so you have to make sure you realize that. Where you get your sources is by coming to the village board meetings. Where you get your, your actual information is make sure you get your e-alerts. You know, if you want to see a news source, we've got a news reporter sitting right down here in the front row. He's the one that's sitting here typing what's happening in the board meetings. He's the one that's writing what's happening. That's a news source. This is news source, okay? So you want your fake news, go to social media, all right? So that's the, that's the real fake, fake, fake news, all right? So we talked about the fake news on social media. We've talked about the comments on anything. We've talked about the election year campaign manager propaganda. So, and then also the lie, the tape. This is not a place to play the tape. The residents that came to the meetings, they know what was said. The residents can see the village board meeting minutes. If you want to have the tape where people can hear it, if you want to stand out in the hallway, I don't care if you want to do that. But I'm not taking the time to rehash something that the trustee said at a, at a board meeting so that we can go ahead and ramble for, for hours. So with that said, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn. We got a motion. Is there a second? All in favor, say aye. Meeting adjourned.